Welcome, everybody. Thanks, Amy. Okay, so, everybody, I'm so glad to see you here. Thank you for coming tonight. Kami just barely asked if anyone missed it, if people had seen the questions she'd sent in the Covenant Sisters email thread. And, yeah, so we could talk about those tonight. And then she said, I don't know what the tone of this meeting is. So I think I should clarify, in case anyone wasn't here last time. And just kind of a reminder, I don't have any person, I have my own personal thoughts on everything. But these meetings are for everybody. Whatever you want to talk about in this meeting, that's up to you. You can raise any questions, concerns that you have about women's councils, women's conferences. My hope for all of this is just to have a regular meeting place for right now, where we can all discuss openly and see what comes out of it. I've been loving that I've just gotten to know people better, and I feel like for me personally, there's, I've kind of sensed this lack of trust in our community. And it's, I'm becoming more trustworthy of people as I'm getting to know them and hearing their thoughts. And I think that this could be fruitful. So thank you all for coming. I'm not gonna talk much. Just to be really clear, I'm not sharing any of my own opinions when we're like having these meetings, if I'm conducting, because I wanna stay really neutral. And so it looks like no one had nominated anybody else to conduct, so I'll conduct tonight. If anyone wants to conduct or nominate someone to conduct, you can email me between now and the next meeting and have an opportunity to conduct next time. Okay, so that's all the business for now. We can just get started. Whoever wants to kick off the meeting is welcome to raise any questions, concerns. We can get our discussion moving. Thanks for being here. Amy?
So just as a reminder, so we had voted on a two-minute soft time and then a five-minute hard time. So there'll be a two-minute counting up and then a three-minute counting down with a total of five, five minutes for everyone who's speaking. And then there's a little gentle ding at the end of the five minutes. And then if there is anything that anybody wanted to vote on, I think, Ali, we do have the option of like making a poll, and then the, the result of the poll will be shared at, at the close. So, however you wanna proceed with that.
Thank you. That was the one thing I really needed to say was the timer thing, and I forgot. So thank you. I'll give a, a time reminder if we need to after the five minutes are up, but I think the beep will go great. So that sounds good to me. Tammy Jo?
So I just remember from our last meeting that there was some that were interested in maybe doing a book club, looking at different resources for being able to learn skills about how to reason together and how to disagree with charity. And I just wanted to know from the group here tonight, is that something that people are still interested in?
I'm definitely interested in that. And I have heard from some others, they are as well. If anyone else wants to say yes, please say it in the chat. Did, oh, okay, it looks like we have Kami and the Bates family. Is one of yours about Tammy Jo's comment? If it is, then you can unmute and start talking.
Mine isn't, but I was going to ask if we're gonna start with a prayer?
Oh, yeah, we should start with a prayer. Yeah, I forgot to ask someone. Would anyone like to pray for us tonight? Kami, would you like to pray for us?
Okay, looks like I'm it. Our dear Father in heaven, we are so grateful for this chance we have to get together and talk about some of the women's issues that have been on our minds and some of them that have been troubling us. There have, there's been a lot of hurt, hurt feelings and injured hearts over the last few months. And we would like to have a, a chance to, but we do have a chance to get together and talk about that. We would love to have your spirit with us so we can work toward healing of those injuries and become united in heart and purpose. And we pray for these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. I'm sorry I threw you under the bus because you had a great idea and then I made you do it. Okay, so if anyone wants to comment to Tammy Jo outside of the chat, feel free to raise your hand. I'll go to Juliana now.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay, I just wanted to let Kami know that I did read the questions, and I thought that they were a good assessment of the topics that are on everyone's mind. And I also read there was an email sent earlier today about binding. And so, but I just throw it out there since she had asked how people felt about it. And I, for me, that is a, a great topic of discussion. I know, I believe that the term started with Stephanie. When she said yes, everything was binding at the conference in November, and I wasn't there. But I did watch part of it. And then I also, I compare that to the scripture, the revelation that says fifty percent or a majority vote decides the voice of the conference. So I know my thoughts on it, but I'd kind of like to hear everyone else's thoughts about what binding means. There was a definition, that's maybe a legal definition, but I think there might be some definitions outside of that that we might consider as well. And if that term binding equates to the voice of the conference and what that means for us.
Thanks, Juliana. I think that's a great place to start the conversation. If anyone has any comments on that, feel free to raise your hand. Kami, go ahead.
Well, since we don't have a lot of talking right now, I'll, I'll give a few of my thoughts on the subject. And I, I was just talking right before the meeting started with someone who has concerns about binding and who is in this meeting, so I won't out them. But the, the question I think I have most about binding is can we build Zion if we don't trust each other and we're not willing to cooperate? Like, to me, that's what binding means, is that we're willing to come together and make agreements with each other. And I think part of the reason this is a tough topic for us is because we've been injured, either by things that have happened in our movement or things that happened to us beforehand. But I am curious if that's kind of where everybody else feels like we're at with this? Or do we have other experiences with the term binding? Yeah, so that's kind of where I'm at.
Thanks, Kami. We'll go to Wendy now. Wendy, you're still muted, just so you know. Wendy, you still there?
On mute.
There you go.
Can you hear me? Sorry, I wanna turn on my video too. I am so, I don't know how to use Zoom on my phone, and my daughter is driving me home from work right now. But I did want to make a comment, so thank you all for your patience. That, as I recall, Stephanie wasn't actually the one who came up with the term binding. It was in anticipation of the last November Women's Conference that there were a number of women who were concerned that they couldn't attend, which is like legit. That's also continues to be a concern, right? And if we don't attend, is what's, what we talk about going to be, is it what we vote on, is that going to be binding, or is it only binding upon the women who attend? And Stephanie, her answer to that, and I'm just paraphrasing, was, "Do you have poison in your heart?" And to me, what that, what that meant to me, and maybe I'm wrong about this, we could totally have a discussion about this, is if we're thinking in terms of binding, not binding, do I have to do this? Do I not have to do this? Maybe we're just not even thinking the right way. Maybe we need to be thinking in terms of, hey, I want us to all get along. I want us to be able to work out these differences amongst ourselves, and maybe it's not gonna be easy. But you know what? We're, we're sure as hell gonna try. I don't know. That's just where my mind is at with it, is like, I don't know if binding is the right question. And I could be persuaded otherwise.
Thanks, Wendy. And no worries about the technical difficulties that happens to the best of us. Hey, we're gonna go to Janet next.
I'm, at this point in time, I'm against having our vote binding, and here's why. I can, I'm willing to listen to other opinions, but my problem is, if you, when I, when we went to the November meeting, no, what, April, wherever our last meeting was, you don't know enough about it, and you don't know all the instances of it. And so it was hard to make those decisions because we didn't know enough. So to me, to make it binding from a group of people who were not present, who didn't hear the witnesses, that makes it hard for us to overturn somebody else who maybe have done it all correctly. Who am I to know more than they when they were present and there? That's my opinion at this moment.
Thanks, Janet. And Midge. Kami, go for it.
So i- in response, I, I guess I'm asking clarifying questions. Are, are you talking about specifically in the case that a conference or a women's council is called into question? In that case, we shouldn't have a binding, the, the term binding shouldn't apply because how could we overturn it? Is that kind of where you're going with, with that question?
Okay, yeah, yes. Yes.
Okay, so i- if that's the case, if we outlaw, because one of the questions was, should we decide, you know, that we cannot overturn, a, a women's conference can't overturn a women's council? If we made that decision, would that affect the way you feel about the voting being binding?
Yes, in that case, it would affect it, wouldn't it? I, I agree, it would affect it.
Perfect. That's pretty much all for me.
Thank you both. Kathy?
Sorry, I'm heated in my kitchen, so you're not gonna see my face. I'm a hot mess. You know, one of the things that really concerned me when I heard that phrase, "You have poison in your hearts", is, to me, it was like, duh. Look where we've come from. Look at all the experiences the women have had with priesthood in the past. The Lord himself has been very clear. You're all wounded. You all have been wounded, and you continue to wound each other. So for me, for someone to stand up to a bunch of very wounded women, whom the Lord even told us we were wounded, and said, "You have poison in your heart", it's like, why don't we talk about the poison in our hearts? And how do we work through letting go and getting rid of that, instead of shaming me that I have some in there? Because I do, and I'm pretty sure most of the women do, just because of the experiences they've had in life. Am I wrong in that? I mean, I think that's something that maybe this group should take on and go. So we have been wounded. We have had some really bad experiences. How do we heal? Instead of walking around and going, well, you've got a poison heart, you know? I, I, that just doesn't resonate well with me at all. And I'm, I'm not certain the Lord told us that to shame us. I think he was telling us the state that we were in with compassion and love. So how do we, who've experienced this, and how do we, who've, a lot of people have been completely beat up from this whole process, how do we give self-care and understanding on kindness? And I'm bleeping out, is that my five or is that my two? I've got three more. Okay. So I, I'm just so, I, I don't think we get well by shaming each other or ourselves. I think that just drives all that hurt and pain down further until it hits something else and then erupts again. That's my thought on that. And I, I think what we need is a lot of compassion. I have so much compassion and tenderness for those women who sat on that council. A lot of them had firsthand experience with when, what went on. It wasn't hearsay. It wasn't secondhand experience. And yet, the opposing side, everything they had was secondhand. It was, it was hearsay because the, the person in question didn't come. And, and by golly, those women who are watchmen, watchmen on the tower, and they saw something with their own eyes, and they called it out and they acted on them. My goodness, six alive. I think our Savior is jumping up and down for joy, but there are watchmen on the tower, helping and protecting and taking action. That's what I think. So I'm done.
Thank you, Kathy.
So can any of us comment to what Kathy had to say? Or do we need to raise our hand, Ali?
Go for it, Tammy.
So I love the idea of actually digging into deep into why of the poison in our hearts. In my experience, there's so many tools, so many different venues and modalities. And just to name a few that I personally love, yoga and meditation. That was my first, like, stepping into the realm of having a healthy mind, body, and, and spirit. So, other things, IFS, though, the Internal Family Systems, Tim Fletcher dealing with childhood trauma. There is Vinnie Tolman, Living God's Light, which is, Janet, did you need to speak right now?
No, I'll wait. I'll wait.
Okay, sorry, you're just unmuted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And so I would love to have these conversations about, you know, inner child work. Last time that we met, we talked about the Four Agreements, which is where I think the term poison heart comes from, if I'm correct. I haven't read the book yet, but I do have it. And I know that there are different speakers out there that are really good at clearing up things with talking about energy and matter and, and how we're all connected and using that kind of inner intuition, instinct, and inspiration to be able to, you know, bring us back into connection and wholeness. So anyways, those are some options, and I just would love to have a conversation about that.
Thank you, Tammy Jo. Go for it, Janet and Midge.
Tammy Jo, I apologize for interrupting you. I'm sorry. I didn't know we were muted. I just wanted to say, I didn't feel poisoned in my heart. I didn't feel like I had any of that. When we started this whole journey about the conference, the Women's Conference, in reference to the dispute, we had no idea who anybody was in the dispute. We didn't know the situation of anything going on in the dispute. I came in with a very open mind, but I did find myself getting very consumed and very upset because of the way the women were treated, because of the restrictions put on that everybody couldn't attend, the restrictions saying so many people couldn't vote, and so many reasons and hoops you had to jump through, all the reason, all the things we had to read. It took three weeks of our time, which I think it was reasonable to take three weeks to reason out a very tough project. But we were forced into reading all of this, attending everything, you know, just, you felt this pressure that it just confused me totally, and I felt forced, and I felt coerced. And, and I didn't think, the premises that came with the conference were not my premises. I didn't agree with those premises from the beginning, but we weren't asked if we agreed with or concurred with that. So that's what brought the bitterness to me, was the way it was handled and the way we were railroaded. And I, I just felt it was very inappropriate and arrogant and unkind. That's, that, that was the bitterness that choked me. And I, I wouldn't have missed it for anything. I learned a lot. I learned a lot about myself, but I also saw the goodness of so many women. I saw the thoughtfulness and the kindness, the hard work and the diligence, and I saw patience. I saw willing to listen, and I, I just saw, saw so many good talents coming from so many women that I was proud to be a part of it. And I was proud to see that women of that caliber were standing up for what they believed in. And I saw women coming together, but I saw so many women put out because they weren't able to have the time or couldn't vote because of certain circumstances that they had to deal with. That's the part that I was unhappy about. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. You can unraise your hand if you're ready, Janet, and we'll go to Kami now.
Okay, I've been having some thoughts as I've been listening. One of them, I think that the concept of healing is very relevant to us right now. And, and I think too that the way we heal is gonna be different for different people, of course. I like the idea of doing book clubs and things like that. For me, though, I'm kind of, I don't know, maybe it's life experience, but I'm kind of a just get back on the horse person. So, so there's different ways that we're going to, to be approaching the healing part. But I do think it's important for us to focus on that, especially if we personally do feel injured by the, the process. Because here's something that, it may be just me, maybe I'm making this up, but I feel like it's not a coincidence that we had the Women's Council with all of its ugliness, and then the Lord gave us a new name and said he would be willing to work with us. And I don't think it's because we were nasty. I think it was because we were willing to engage. And I feel like the first Women's Council, we kind of wanted to punt. You know, we wanted to, and I, I'm one of the people who wanted to do that, so. But I feel like we didn't really wanna get into it because we were afraid of the ugliness. We were afraid of things. But once we were kind of forced into it, we did see ugliness, but we saw good things too. And good things have happened since then. And personally, I think that the reason the Lord said, okay, I can work with you, is because we were willing to do it. And so carrying on with that, I feel like part of our task at this point is to continue to engage. And obviously, we wanna do it better. We wanna learn how to do this more appropriately. But, but to continue to dig in and do the work, I think is a really important thing. And I think it's a really beautiful thing, because I think the fact that there are still so many women who are like, yeah, I got hurt, but, you know, let's keep doing this. I think that is a very big sign of maturity and hope for us as women, as a movement, as, as covenant Christians. So that's where I'm, that's where I'm thinking.
Thank you, Kami.
Okay, if nobody has anything to say, I'll say some more things. Oh.
Actually, I wanna respond to you, Kami.
Oh, go for it.
So you said that for you, it's getting back on the horse. Can you, like, go into that a little bit deeper and tell me what that looks like? If book club isn't, you know, your jam, what would, what would speak to you?
I'm not saying that book, that a book club wouldn't be my thing. I just tend to, if I get bit by the serpent, I, you know, patch myself up and then go pick it up again, which is not necessarily a wise thing always, but. Yeah, I guess I was just, just trying to point out that there's different styles for approaching healing, because we all have to kind of let something go. That's, I think that's essentially what healing is, was we have to let it go. And for some people, that involves meditation. And for some people, it's reading and, you know, researching. And for some people, it's just walking back out to the horse and getting back on and hope, you know, learning something, but hoping it goes differently. So that was kind of all I was saying.
Okay, so I guess what I'm understanding then, thank you for clarifying, is that when you say getting back on the horse means, when you're saying letting go, you're letting go of whatever the trauma or offense or disagreement was, and you're just moving on and re-engaging. Is, did I get that right?
Yeah, for me, part of it. Okay, I'll use a kind of a dumb response, but let's say I break up with a guy. I would, of course, there was, there would be emotional attachments to places. We went to dinner, to things we used to do, activities, you know? And so, once I got to a point where I felt like I could do it, I would go back to all of those places, usually with new people. And I wouldn't tell them why we were there. You know, I'd pick a female friend, and we'd go to eat at the place where we had some big romantic thing, whatever. And the point was to create new memories in a place where I had bittersweet or negative memories and reclaim that for myself. So when I say get back up on the horse, I just mean kind of re-engaging, not going off and hiding. And it doesn't mean you have to do it immediately or the same, you know, because you, you do have to kind of sit back and heal for a few minutes. But for me, that's the process, is to be like, okay, this place, this thing, this activity has a negative feeling for me now. I'm gonna go back, you know, brace myself and just go back and create a new memory and create a new experience with this. Does that make sense?
Sorry, it took me a moment to find my mute button. Yeah, I do. Sorry, it took me a moment to find my mute button. Um, yeah, I do appreciate that you um gave that uh amazing example. It's beautiful. In fact, I was just going to um uh I was looking on my phone because there's something that I think actually speaks to that. And I don't know if people know about Joe Dispenza, but he talks about that very thing that you, your example talks about, uh Cami, and that is your mind is something that we can actually use to be able to bypass um the old programming and create new programming so that we can have different outcomes. So I love it. I'm so grateful that you were willing to like give me the time and space to be able to flesh that out some more. Thank you, Cami.
Thank you, ladies. That was a really interesting conversation. Um, I'm just gonna bring up this comment Janet had asked in the chat. Here's a thought, what would happen in a dispute if the two sides involved were not able to set all the parameters of the conference? Instead, a third party that was neutral would set it up. Does anyone want to comment on that? I should also say, or anyone else who wants to comment on Tammy Jo and Cami's thoughts.
Okay, so uh I'm clarifying again. In this scenario, we are, we're allowing people to contend uh or or essentially try to overturn a women's council. Is that the scenario or just any old uh disputes?
I was just basically talking about a dispute because the Lord said we could have a conference to uh resolve disputes. But I thought that our conference would have been better if it had been by a neutral party instead of the person who was disputing set up the the uh parameters of it. I felt like that was a little more to one side than if, I thought it was more one-sided than it should have been. But perhaps that would result if it was a neutral party.
Yeah, got it.
Taking into account just trying to help others resolve a problem.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, I think it goes Wendy and then Juliana.
Okay, I think, oh, I figured out my camera and my microphone. I know how to use my phone now, friends. Um, I actually really liked Janet's idea. Um, I'd never thought of that before. Um, I know I personally, and I keep feeling like I'm an outlier, but I've I have concerns about blanket like voting to not allow a conference to ever be about overturning a women's council simply because I feel like we don't know what women's councils are gonna come. Like, the last one was pretty unanimous. Um, and that doesn't mean that there's never going to be a women's council that is unjust, and that feels a little bit um it just feels a little bit limiting to have that off the table, especially since in many ways, these this feels like the parameters the Lord has given us to, hey, call a conference if there is a dispute about anything. And what I really like about Janet's idea, I really hadn't considered it till right now, is it eliminates so much bias. It, I mean, potentially, right? If you truly have a neutral third party that says, okay, there's a dispute, hey, I will act as, I will set up the conference, I will make sure that um both parties involved in the dispute get appropriate airtime, like, I don't know, I just really, really like it. I think that that could potentially work and also not limit us from the possibilities of what we may need women's conferences.
It looks like Cami is talking directly to Wendy, so I'll go to Cami and then back to Juliana.
Okay, uh, yes, I was responding directly to Wendy. So um my concern, I guess, is if we allow uh basically a repeat of what happened last time, though different. Um, we still have the issue that people are being asked to make a judgment call on things that are not meant to be made public. In other words, the contents of the councils are still meant to be held private, you know, kept private, at least somewhat. Um, and then the, and then women are being asked to make a judgment call on whether it was conducted properly or whatever, which is tough. Now, I'm not saying it can't be done, but that was kind of the issue that some people had with the last one is, you know, how are we supposed to do this without airing all the dirty laundry that was meant to be contained by the council? Um, but also, if we decide to outlaw having councils uh be under the jurisdiction of conferences, we would still need to come up with some way to to mediate those. So saying that we're not gonna do it by holding a conference doesn't mean that there won't be any way to address it. Does that make sense? So, so I guess that's kind of a clarification slash response.
Thanks. Go for it, Juliana.
I wanted to talk about the idea that Janet threw out there about having a neutral third party. And I think the comments after that were all very good, too. My thought was, I wonder the Lord, I wonder about the Lord's purposes in calling or establishing uh women's conferences so that we could learn to reason together. And, you know, I feel like that's what we're doing here. And I feel like it's an opportunity um to reason together. I don't, I I, here's my thought. I don't know that I want to turn it over to a neutral third party so that it's easier on us. I'm wondering if it's an opportunity for us to figure out. I'm so sorry. Penelope. I don't think she's gonna come here. Um, an opportunity for us to figure out how do this. Um, and I'm, I'm not sure that we'd be able to find a neutral third party and we'd have to talk about what that would mean too. And I'll shut up now because she won't be quiet.
You're okay, Juliana. Thank you for your thoughts. Cami, go ahead.
I'm gonna take advantage of all of the silent pauses. One of the thoughts that's crossed my mind is I've worked to put this to put the fall slash end of June votes together, is that if we decide that things are not binding, which I'm not really sure, like, I think we need to work out what that means and and all that kind of stuff. But if we decide against things being binding, none of the rest of it really matters. Because anything that the women decide, mm, you know, okay, suggestions. So we're kind of already acting as if these things are binding. And I'm just kind of curious what everybody's thoughts are because, like I said, it feels like the main question, well, I don't know, main question, but one of the big questions is, are we, are we agreeing to honor these councils and or these conferences or, you know, the votes of the women? If we don't, then what does that mean? And that's it for me for a few minutes.
Thank you. We're on to Janet and Midge now.
I think one of the problems is that we have not decided if women have the right to overturn a council. And I guess my basic premise is, I don't really think that's the purpose of the council. I think there's, I think the women's um conference could discuss if they thought something was wrong with how we were handling councils. And then perhaps amend or request that we look at as some component of it. But I didn't think that my job in the conference was to overturn a a a council that I thought was fairly put. I don't know if I'm making myself clear, but to me, I think the conference is to air the problems and have discussions and talk about any changes we'd like to make. But I didn't think the purpose of it was to overturn a council that had already been held, especially if the council didn't seem to me like it had done anything terribly wrong. Um, when you have that many women, a hundred percent, and it's that caliber of women, I didn't see a problem there. And uh, so I didn't think my job was to overturn the council. But I certainly think it's okay to take a look at, is there a continuing thread that we need to address as we go about these things? Or as we go about doing anything in the, in our in our group as to how we want to handle things? Hope that's clear.
Thank you, Janet. Tammy Jo, go ahead.
So I have a thought. Um, and it come, it seems to me that um the one heart, one mind that the Lord is asking us, well, he, he basically says, I loved both Paul and Peter, and you must do better. And I'm considering the how, how do I do better? That a lot of the stuff that might be seen as what prevents the mutual agreement, um, what's higher than that? I can't remember. I know that the, you know, uh somebody help me. They're writ, the first one is if you have a majority vote, then you have one heart and one mind, which is mutual agreement. Is it unanimity that's the highest? I think it is. Okay. Thank you. All I had to do is look at your little sweet face and it all came back to me. But it's like, okay, the things that seem to be in my um viewpoint and watching and listening to people is that we all have this core hurt that's running around inside of us. And so we put up these walls and these barriers and we're concerned. And I'm wondering if it's more um uh, it it reminds me of um Marshall Rosenberg when he goes into these, these like crazy places in like Africa and the people are killing each other. They are like, one tribe is killing the members of the other tribe. And he sits down with them and he makes this declaration to those of us who are listening. He says, once you can have everyone's feelings and needs heard and understood, then the solution comes. And you can have people make or come to a consensus, which to me seems like more of a a unanimity. And I'm wondering if anyone else is feeling, you know, like not um uh, is feeling anxious and needs to feel safe. Uh, it is feeling pain and hurt and, you know, wants to be seen. Um, like, I I'm wondering if we're talking about the external stuff and we're missing the point, which is the internal stuff. The stuff that's inside of us, the stuff that hasn't been resolved. And when we can be authentic and be like, yeah, I got messy stuff going on in here, but I'm gonna show up and at least be honest and try to be vulnerable. And hopefully, you can see my heart and I can see your heart and we can make these supposed issues not really the issue. Because if we're all seen and heard, then we're more aligned and we're doing better than Peter and Paul. Anyways, it's just a question to throw out there. Hopefully, somebody can understand my gibberish.
I appreciate it, Tammy Jo. Someone had actually mentioned to me a little while ago in this meeting um, the idea of doing a poll on this. It was earlier when we're talking about poison heart, that comment. And um seeing where people's heads are at, it could be an anonymous poll. But they suggested we have this option to see if people feel like their own hearts are hurting. If they feel like their hearts are okay, if they've been healed, if they feel like they see other people with broken, both poisoned hearts. If that would be of interest, we could do that poll and kind of see where people's feelings are.
I would like the poll to be self-reflective because I don't know that anyone can judge my heart except for me, and maybe the Lord uh is gonna be the only one better than me.
Annette, go for it.
I think Tammy's right. That's part of the problem is that we look at each other with judgment all the time. And the Lord has given us different standards which we can't quite live yet. We're supposed to be able to look at each other and allow people to have a difference of opinion. And we could listen with patience and long suffering. And if we have a different opinion, we should just maybe perhaps ask a question and say, oh, that's interesting. How do you feel about this? Instead of putting a roadblock by stating our own opinion, which cuts, slows down conversation, if if you will. So in this last conference, what I saw is we do not have the capacity yet to totally respect each other so without judgment. So these, the the women who were paying for the conference and organizing the conference did set a lot of guidelines. And it didn't feel inclusionary to a lot of people. So it it um, but how many of us had the patience to stand back and say, that's okay? If these people uh have a particular need or whatever, can we, can we give them grace? Can we give them patience? Can we listen with long suffering? We need to increase our capacity. I'm just not sure exactly how to to do that. But if we have a difference of opinion, the Lord has told us how to how to convince each other with patience and long suffering and persuasion and kindness, right? Anyway, we are, you know, I I'm still trying to learn so many things and unfortunately, I'm getting older. So anyway, thank you.
Amy, were you going to say something?
Maybe not. Maybe that's just me. Thank you, Annette.
I should say, I did notice, however, extreme efforts taken for people to stand back and listen. I mean, there was multiple opportunities for private negotiations that we learned about. And yet there was still a lot of conflict, wasn't there? Yeah, many hearts were wounded and we need to acknowledge that and see how we can do better. Sorry, I don't have solutions. But the tools that have been mentioned, you know, are a great start. We we all need to increase our capacity, don't we? Thank you.
Thanks, Annette. Okay, so we got that poll set up. If you guys would like to vote on it. I can't remember if I said already, it will be anonymous. And we can go to Cami next.
Okay, um, I was actually about to put something in chat.
Okay, um, I was actually about to put something in chat, which I have now done. I'm, of course, I'm thinking about, uh, how this relates, all of this relates to, uh, the voting and, and so on especially. But, um, I guess my question, so initially the, the plan, or the current plan, I should say, is to hold a vote, uh, the last week of June. Unless I think of something better, I'll probably just have people email me their responses. And then I'll put it in a spreadsheet and either just give the response, you know, give the, the results. Or if people want, I can put the entire spreadsheet out. Uh, it's, it's up to you guys. But my, my question is, do we need to maybe have more time to talk about things? Not time. Uh, space, I guess. Like for instance, another Zoom meeting before then to talk about things on, uh, the, the next or the end of the month voting. Trying to make sure I'm using the correct words here. So I put the questions as they were posted up again, just so people can see them. Um, and it seems like there's some discussion around whether or not the conferences have the ability, to overturn a, a council. That's where the discussion is and also on binding. The other two, which would be that the, the conferences have to make it so that every woman can participate and vote. Those two don't seem to be problematic for anyone. Am I getting an accurate, uh, feel for how everybody is feeling about these?
Thanks for your question, Cami. We'll wait and see if anyone responds.
On question number two, the conference must allow all women who want to attend the ability to do so. Does that include Zoom or physical attendance or just physical attendance? What does that mean?
I can clarify on, on the wording on that one. Um, I assume, or my intention was that it means that there needs to be a Zoom option or something like that, so people can hear what is going on in as close to real time as we can make it.
Go for it, Marlene.
Hi, um, I just wanted to let the group know that I'm one of those people who truly wanted to be able to attend and to hear what was going on and see what was going on. I read every last piece of paper from both sides. I attended every Zoom. I attended extra Zooms. I was fully prepared. And through no fault of my own, I was not able to attend. I didn't like hearing that those who didn't attend weren't maybe as invested, because that is just not the truth. And so my heart was a little bit hurt that I wasn't able to participate when we have the technology that would have allowed me to. And I think in the future, we need to make sure when the revelation says all interested women may participate, that we make this available to all interested women, because we don't all live in Utah. I think we learned a lot from this. I mean, I think we'll, we'll do better on both sides of this story. We'll probably do better as women's councils and we'll do better holding women's conferences as we learn from these, what I consider mistakes, hurtful mistakes. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene.
Okay, a few more seconds left on the poll and then I'll close it. Not everybody has responded, but if you choose not to, that's fine too.
Oh, sorry, Cami, I didn't see your hand raised. Okay, we have Cami and then we'll go to Carolyn next.
I just can't stand to have dead silence in these meetings, that's all. Okay, so the, the second part of my question, which was, do we want to have another Zoom maybe between now and then? Um, is kind of where, what I'm thinking now, because we've talked about the binding issue and we've talked about the conference, but I don't feel like we've really come to any consensus on that. Is it something that everybody feels like we need to do? Or, or are we good to go ahead and, and cast votes on these things?
All right, let's go to Carolyn. And then if anyone wants to comment on that, raise your hand.
My next thing is wanting to sort of find question on these things. I haven't, I don't know how I missed the last couple Zoom meetings, but I did and I didn't know about them. But, um, if you could just answer the question, are these these questions, those four questions that are in the chat, are, is, are you planning on voting on those at the end of the month or, and, and will we have another Zoom meeting before then? And just want, kind of want to know what's going on. And then I have some comments I wanted to share after I get an answer to that question.
Do you want to respond to that, Cami?
Yeah, so, um, there was one Zoom meeting before this, correct? I'm like, if there was another one, I missed it too. Okay, so yeah, this is the second one. Um, okay, what were the two questions? Great. Brain like a sieve. Oh, the, the way that, that I've got it currently structured, because it seemed like there were two distinct things that we were, we, we, we women, if I can speak, uh, have questions about one and it seemed like the first one, so I made it the first one. Um, the first issue is how the conferences themselves should be structured, what is their scope? And so that's what these four questions are about is, is the conferences and what they can and cannot do or should and should not do. Um, and then in the fall, we can, you know, between now and then, we'll talk about the other issues, um, which relate more to the councils and, you know, best practices and all that kind of stuff. And then we'll have another vote. And now I don't have questions for the fall vote. Um, that one is a continuation of the last fall. And so I, and I put it on my website, which is much better than it used to be, but still not where I want it to be. So, you know, it's a work in progress. But I'm trying to get it clarified so people can see what was voted on last fall. So we know what we've already accepted or not accepted. And then again, this fall being a continuation, you know, what do we still have as unfinished business that needs to be voted on? That's the structure. Hopefully that makes sense.
So that would be, we're, we're not doing anything this month, right?
Uh, when you say we're not doing anything, you mean by way of Zoom meeting? Because there is a vote the last week. Sorry, what was that?
I'm, I'm talking about the fourth question. We're not voting on those until the fall, right?
No, those will be the end of this month, so that then we can go ahead and, and discuss the other questions. Because depending on how we decide these four questions, it's gonna make a big difference on the discussion for the other questions. According to the way I'm seeing things at least. So let me know if, if you don't agree.
Okay, so, now, thank you for the clarification. I was a little bit confused about that. So the comments I wanted to make, I've been reading through the P and C lately. And I just recently ran across section 126. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. But I just wanted to read, so that in the, um, in the heading, it says, "A question asked the Lord concerning the trying of the first presidency of the Church of Latter-day Saints for Concession." According to the item of law found in the third section of the Book of Covenants, whether the decision of such a council of one state shall be conclusive for Zion and all the states. And I thought that was interesting, because it seemed to be, um, very similar to what we're dealing with, you know, like the trying of the first presidency and is a decision made of such a council of one state, is it gonna be conclusive or binding for Zion and all the states? And I wondered if we ought to try and, and study that further, in our decision, so that we aren't doing things based off emotion, but we're actually looking into it and, and, and making our decision wisely. Cause it appears as I'm reading through this, that the, get all, like, uh, verse four, it's saying that the presidency of the church may be tried by the voice of the whole body of the Church of Zion. Even the first presidency can be tried. And when you go into the, and by the way, the section in the Book of Covenants, um, I just found it. It's actually in the P and C, one fifty-nine. And that, that goes into all the different duties of like the bishop and, uh, you know, that, that the bishop would be the judge and goes through all of that. And then it goes through how every, all persons belonging to the church are not exempt from the support of the church. So there's got, there's gonna be, a need to be a, a balance, a second balance for even the presidents of a church. And it goes into it further in that section as well. Um, so I wanted to point that out, because I do think that we need something there. We do need to be able to, I mean, some of you guys mentioned earlier that maybe there are women's councils that we could decide, or we aren't handling things perfectly. And if we just simply say they can't be overturned, then there is no second balance. And so what does that need to look like? If we're not agreeing with how things are handled in this route, what does need to happen? And I'm not saying I do agree or disagree. I'm just saying I think there does need to be something in place. I think we need to take this into account and uh, make a, a wise observation here. I mean, even the early church was structured that way. And so, uh, and I know we're not being set up to in organization, but there does need to be something in place, I think. So just wanted to put that out and hopefully you guys will all look into it.
Go ahead, Cami. Thanks, Carolyn.
I actually meant to just give her a thumbs up, but I do have, uh, I did want to say that I agree. If, if we decide that we don't want to do the conferences as a, you know, a way of, of deciding the matters on councils, then we do need to have something. And I think, um, I really liked that you brought this up, because this is not something that I've seen before. I mean, I've seen it, but, um, not in the context of our, of our, uh, current discussions. So thank you for bringing up section 126. And, um, and I think it actually would be good for us to go through, especially the doctrine of covenants, um, well, teachings and commandments now. And, and look for things like this, because we don't necessarily have to invent the wheel again. Uh, I think part of what we're dealing with right now is that the Lord already has mechanisms in place and principles in place. It's more that we're trying to discover these things and find them, I think. So yeah, I, I totally agree with, uh, what Carolyn was saying about how we've got to have something in place in case there is an unjust, uh, council. So, yeah, thumbs up.
Carolyn, do you still have your hand up?
Yeah, I can't really say I'm on my side.
Go for it.
Um, I just, just like with the events of the last few months with this council and conference, I've heard a lot of people saying things like, we shouldn't even be questioning the women's council, or we shouldn't, you know, um, or we, we need to just trust them. And, and what I, I would agree that we need to give them the benefit of the doubt and do, you know, it's then trust. I, I do disagree that we shouldn't, that with the comment on we ought to just not question. And I think that would, you know, that stemmed from very similar background of not questioning the church authorities or not quite. I came from the Kingston group. I was called, "Don't even question the authorities. Don't question anybody." And I think that leaves room for them to, um, practice unregistered dominion or whatever it is. And I'm not saying that that was the case with the, the women's council, but I'm saying that to approach something that way would be ignorant and pushing off the responsibility and, you know, just hoping that you don't have to get our hands dirty in a way. And so, and just kind of going back to the idea that there do need to be second balances. And we do have a responsibility to not just trust each other, but to be vulnerable and real with each other and really to understand one another. So that we can, but what's the word I'm looking for? We need to be able to, um, I am missing the word, but, to be able to confront one another honestly, you know, and, and to, to build that trust further. I think if we can be honest with one another on how things are being handled, rather than just blindly following or saying, listen, ask questions. I think that trust will go deeper. And we'll be able to learn from our mistakes and we'll be able to handle things better. And, and so I don't, I think that we ought to be questioning. So hopefully, hopefully that makes sense.
Thank you for your thoughts, Carolyn. Go for it, Juliana.
I've moved away from the dog. I think Carolyn makes a good point and I don't think any of us want to, follow the same path of not questioning. And I think a lot of us are trying really hard not to fall back into the same mold that we were used to. So perhaps that means that Cami's question about, hold on, I'm looking for it. Can a conference be called to overturn a women's council? I think that in order to answer that question, perhaps there are some sub-questions that need to be discussed or asked first. Because if you did have a question, which is, that's what the last women's conference was about. There was a question. How far can you go? I don't think anybody wants to be any of those women that were the fourteen women in that council. So I, I, I think part of our job, job is maybe not the right, responsibility is not just to look out for, fair women's councils, but also protecting the rights of the women that are on those councils. So, that would be one question. The other is, that pops out of my mind is, how would you even go about overturning a women's council? If you aren't privy to, and I, Emily had raised a question earlier about, you know, um, talking about what went on in a women's council and, um, in order for the community at large to know what's going on. I think Cami made a good point that maybe there's some more discussion that needs to happen around this, so that we can figure out what would be the best, what would be the best thing to do. And I just want to leave with this thought. For me, I've had to release the idea that we have to do this perfectly. That we have to figure out exactly what has to be done. And so we better really, study and pray, which we should study and pray anyway. But I often think that I can't make a mistake. And that gets me into problems. The Lord wants us to make mistakes. I mean, he expects us to make them. The Lord wants us to make mistakes. I mean, he expects us to make them and to learn from them. So as we're going through this process to establish um fairness and protection, I think it's okay to leave room for and be okay with the mistakes that we make. And as we have new experiences or new, new things come up that make us go, hmm, what are we going to do about this? Then we can come back together. And I know Stephanie had mentioned this also, that it's a wonderful opportunity that we can do this again and again, as many times as we need to. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Juliana. Go ahead, Paula.
Thank you. Um, I'm thinking about what has been said. I, I'm reflecting on the, a little bit on the revelation the Lord gave almost a year ago. And I, I reflected on, of course, like everybody else, what the revelation has been given regarding women's councils and priesthood certificates and whatnot. And I, I do not understand the idea of ever overturning a women's council decision, even if you question it, that's fine. But I don't understand the idea of going into the women's conferences with the idea that if there was a mistake made, then we ought to be able to overturn the decision of the council. Because I think it, that council supersedes, in my mind, supersedes the women's conferences and what we do there. It's the learning experiences of uh what we're supposed to do differently, what can we learn from the past councils? I've never done a council, but I have talked to um women who have been on their councils and, and I, I know what they've, I, I feel what they've gone through to do that. I'm sure there's been mistakes, so I'm, I'm just sorry, I just don't agree with ever overturning the women's council's decision. And the whole point of that council is, is helping the man because he's done something that is questionable in his behavior. Well, what is it really? It's him having his priesthood certificate removed temporarily so he can make those corrections. We're all needing repentance. And I can't tell you how many times my husband said, well, if I've ever been, if there's ever a question about what I've done, I am going to willingly give over my certificate without question. So I know what I have to do to correct and change. It's, it's almost like we've, we've condemned these women because I, I don't know, the women that have done these councils, just what they have gone through just breaks my heart. And it should have been a light thing. All of it should have been a light thing. I, so my, I don't agree with ever overturning a, a man or the women's council's decisions for a man's priesthood certificate, whatever it may be. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. We'll go to Kami now.
Man, I talk a lot. Um, I, I partly just wanted to say, I, I agree with what Paula's saying. Um, having been on a council, I, I know I walked into that council knowing the different personalities of the people who are involved, well, women, let's be specific. Um, knowing, you know, different backgrounds, different uh ways of viewing things. And I was pretty confident in my own jaded mind that we would not be able to come to a unanimous decision. I was like, yeah, let's see how this works, you know? But I, I saw the sincerity that the women uh utilized, you know, to come to the decision and how everybody, I mean, everybody was taking it just as seriously as possible. There was lots of praying, there were mistakes made, I'm sure. But we did come to a unanimous decision and I was uh at that point absolutely convinced that the Lord's hand had to be in it. Because um, again, you know, there's no way that we all came to the same decision from all of our different backgrounds without the Lord's help. And um, coming out of a woman's council, I became a lot more uh trusting, I guess, of the women. Um, it really helped me feel like, yeah, we can do this. It's when we involve the Lord in things, when we uh take things to Him, allow Him to educate us, to guide us, train us, whatever. We have miracles. Um, the, like I said, the council that I was on, I consider that a miracle that we were able to come to a consensus on how to proceed. So I, I too am very, very reluctant to even approach the idea of overturning a council. And I'm not saying it couldn't happen. Um, and I do think there needs to be some kind of, of a mechanism for that. But, but I don't see it being for sure very often that, that we even consider it. And yeah, basically, I, I kind of agree with what Paula was saying.
Thanks, Kami. Go for it, Juliana.
Sorry, my words aren't very organized. I was, I'm looking for the source. I am very much into sources and I know that Denver said at one point, and I'll try to find it and put it in the chat during the week, that if we can get twelve women to agree on something, then the Lord considers that the decision. And so the thought has been put forth by people who would know better than I, that if we if men can find, men who have been, who have had councils, who have been very offended by the fact that they've been asked to repent and they don't want to repent. And they've been, they've had their priesthood certification taken away so that it gives them an opportunity to repent, that if they find out that women's councils can be overturned by conferences, all the next conferences for as many years are just going to be these men lining up to have their council overturned. I mean, do we really want to spend all of our women's conferences having to deal with these little fights? Because I think it will bind us and tie us down. Instead of reaching up to the heavens and learning about heavenly things that Heavenly Mother would have us do, we are going to be just reiterating bad stuff all the time. It, that will be hard on our hearts. I know that the council that I sat on, the two councils I sat on, just hearing the heartbreak and the sins and the consequences of all that really weighed down my soul. And so I'm having to take a lot of time and prayer and, you know, asking the Lord to please take that, take those feelings out of my heart because it's so difficult. And I would hate for every women's conference to turn out like that, like this last one. Because if they do, I just don't think women are going to cooperate. Because we just, you do, we don't want to bring that much ugliness in our lives. And so that, that's just my feeling. I, I really, really am reluctant to say that we can overturn a council. And I think that instead, that if we can get twelve women to agree on something, that the man, even if he feels like he's innocent, there is something in his life that he can repent for and he should come, he should come before the council with humble heart and ask to have a certificate given back to him. Anyway, I hope that makes sense and I'm sorry, I don't have any sources right now.
Thank you, Juliana. I wonder if you're referencing the blog post, "Questions About Women's Councils." I can link that right now if you want.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Go ahead, Kami. And Juliana, you can unraise your hand if you're ready.
Yeah, I was just going to second what Juliana was saying. And also remember that, that like she, she slash you stated, I know my brain is a mess, who said it? But um, we already do have a mechanism where the man can go back to the council, you know, and say, hey, I don't think, you know, I fixed the problem or I don't think that was fair or whatever. And, and it's seven women to reinstate. So if there is some degree of humility on his part, even if it was unjust, um, you know, where he goes back to the council and says, you know, let's look at this again, that's, that's a thing that's already in place. So that may be all that we need. I'm, I'm open to that being all that we need as far as, as a ability to redress these things.
Go for it, Juliana. Thank you, Kami.
And just as a reminder, um, seven women on the council can give a man back a certificate. You don't even need all twelve at that point. I'll be quiet now. Sorry, I'm taking up too much time.
You're okay. I'm glad to hear your thoughts. Thank you. I have a question if nobody else has one yet. Um, going back to Kami, the June vote, so I'm wondering if are you saying the June vote is a part of the November conference? So it's another binding vote? The November conference would be on Stephanie's document she presented last year? And then this June would be like a mini-conference about women's conference procedures? Is that what I'm, am I understanding that right?
Yes. Um, and the reason I split it up that way is because if we answer the questions in these four questions um, one way, then it might negate a lot of what the fall would be about. Or, you know, or the other way, like it depends on how we want to answer these questions. And, and to kind of bring up the binding thing again, again, we're already kind of assuming that everything is binding. So um, even though we don't like the words, the way, the way I think about it is if you're building a house, and, and this is in the context of we are trying to build Zion, right? We're trying to put the pieces in place. But if you are trying to build a house, you cannot do it without using bindings and fastenings of some kind. You can't nails, screws, glue, um, even fancy woodwork. It's all some kind of way to keep things together, hold them in place. So the way that I see it, um, you know, even if the term binding can be a little bit triggering, we do need to have agreed upon things so that we can move forward. And it doesn't mean that we can't ever call it back into question. So the, the questions that we have sound like there's somewhat, there's some agreement on them. Um, I mean, we'll see at the actual vote. Um, but for instance, if we decide we are not going to agree to be uh bound by the votes, then what really would be the purpose of having a fall conference? If it doesn't really matter between fellowships? So, so yes, the, the point is, it is part of the fall conference. But I felt like these questions needed to be answered first. Then depending on how they're answered, we can proceed with the other questions that may come up. So does that thoroughly muddy up the water?
Thank you, that answers my question. I'm wondering also if, you know, I just, I just went to check Restoration Archives, um, sorry, Restoration Events to see if there was any posting on there about it. I know I don't have far reach, I'm pretty new to the community still. And so I have a ton of connections. I don't know how many people, like Carolyn said tonight, she didn't know about that first Zoom. I know there are probably other people who aren't hearing about these meetings and being able to participate in the discussion leading up to that vote in June. And then I'm curious how people will find out about the vote in June. Are you planning on um putting it on Restoration Events so that people can know about it? So it's kind of in like that hub area where people flock to, to know what conferences are coming up? Um, and, ooh, I don't know what else I was going to say. That's a question.
Um, okay, so yes, um, and I was just, I just wrote down that I need to put it up on those places. I, there was a reason I didn't do it earlier and now, now I can't remember what it was. But yeah, I think, I think I do need to make sure everyone knows. So anybody on here, make sure your fellowships and whatever know. But I will see if I can get it on both the, the archives and see if Denver will post it too. So that everybody knows we've got a vote coming up, um, and just kind of generally what the structure is. So, yes.
Thanks for answering that. Go for it, Juliana.
I just wanted to clarify and make sure I understood that the question on binding uh means that it will be binding until someone decides that it needs to be revisited? Is that correct?
Are you asking Kami?
I'm asking anybody. I guess Kami, yes.
I, I, my understanding um is basically like any other vote, that, yeah, unless, unless it comes up in the future that, that doesn't work, that whatever it was that we decided on is not a workable solution and we want to go back and change things by another vote, I would, I would assume, yeah, it's just, that is the rule until it gets overturned or revisited.
Go ahead, Kami Jo. You're still muted, just so you know.
Sorry. There's a comment in the chat from a Zoom user, and I'm just wondering um if we can have the name of who is making the comment because it's just anonymous.
Go ahead, Kami.
Sorry, censor silence. Um, do we want to have another Zoom meeting between now and the end of June? Do, do people feel like um we have further issues that need to be worked out? Or are we fairly comfortable with things i- in this group? Just curious.
Go ahead, Carolyn. You're still muted, just so you know.
Are you talking to me? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Did you raise your hand?
I did, yeah. And then I must try and unhook from Bluetooth so they could hear me. And then I didn't hear anything you said, so.
Oh, you're good. I was just letting you know you're still muted, but you're good to start whenever you're ready.
Okay. Um, I personally would like to have one more Zoom meeting because I think that with us reaching out to our fellowships and those that we want to invite to be a part of the vote, I think we ought to, it'd be wise to allow them to be a part of a conversation and to have further discussion on these topics, rather than just bring a vote on everybody. Um, so that's my personal opinion. I would appreciate another Zoom meeting.
Thanks, Carolyn. I'd be happy to host another Zoom meeting if people are interested in that. Um, I'd also throw out there maybe even, it seems to me like maybe the end of June to do a vote. I, mm, ooh, sorry, I'm so not organized. Um, Kami, I wonder if it might be helpful to wait a little longer before holding the vote? Kami, I wonder if it might be helpful to wait a little longer before holding the vote. Since there might be some people who just have no idea. We've had these Zoom meetings that we've been discussing things. And, um, maybe are still processing April and November. Maybe we could, I wonder if you'd be interested in getting that on Denver's website if he'd be open to posting it and and then. Restoration events before. Deciding when to do it? I don't know.
What if, um, I'll go ahead and and submit them both today, you know, when they actually go up, I'll, is anybody's guess, but. Um. I'll submit them both today and then with with the current deadline. But, um, once those are up, whatever, we can have a. A poll or something and see, because if this is something that people, you know, that the women want to discuss, I'm totally open with that. We can postpone. But if it's something that most people are actually decided on and we're ready to just move on. I don't want to unnecessarily prolong things, which is kind of why I'm trying to get a feel for. You know, how we here in this Zoom are feeling about it because. Um, that tends to be kind of a reflection on the, on the wider movement, but. But yeah, I'm totally open to postponing it if that, if there's a, a reason to do so. Um, so yeah, I'll get those put up and we'll see. How people are feeling.
Thanks for answering. Go ahead Kami.
So have we decided we're going to have another Zoom meeting? Is that where we're at on this?
We could do a poll on that, um, in this Zoom meeting right now if you guys would like to. Um. I could arrange that. Do you guys want to vote on that? Maybe just send like a yes in the group chat if you'd like to go on another meeting? Or. Yeah. It looks like we're going, we have some people who'd like the poll, so we'll work on that. I'll let you know. When, um, it's ready to go up. All right, it will probably just pop up when it's ready, but you guys are welcome to keep discussing. Annette, I see your question in the chat, but I'm not sure if I understand it all the way. Um. Let's see. Would you mind clarifying maybe what you mean by. Those not a part of these meetings who may ask why a summer vote and not wait till November? What, what do you mean by that?
Um, I guess I was just wondering if Kami's giving this input because she's planning the. The November conference by having these discussions and kind of. Getting everybody's input for, for planning purposes. Some people will say, well, why even hold a November conference if you're doing all this? Discussion and voting in the middle of the summer, you know? Um, I, I'm just trying to in my own mind say. Are we? I, I know you guys have been at this a lot longer than I have, so I apologize. I'm just not sure if I'm understanding what we're even doing.
In the meetings, you mean, like what the Zoom meetings purposes?
I, I'm meaning a vote, um, the, the actual, um. You know, voting on the four questions that have been posted. Is that for the purposes of structuring the November conference?
Um, yeah, partly. Um, basically I was looking at it and I, and I saw that we have two. Different issues that we've been talking about over the last, I don't know, six to eight months, whatever it's been. And one of them is how do the meetings them or the conferences? What are they for? What do we do in them? How are they going to be structured? Um. And then the other questions are about the councils. And so I was like, well, depending on how we answer the questions on conferences. May influence the questions on conferences. So to kind of make it a little bit easier. To. Discuss things to to come at the situation, I decided to kind of break them up. So the first thing we're talking about. The first vote is about the conferences. What scope they have, what can be done, you know, who's involved in them, that kind of thing. And then, then we go to the councils and how they will be conducted, which is what the fall will be about. Does that make sense hopefully? So.
That's perfect. Thank you so much for clarifying that. That helps me understand a lot more.
Yeah, no problem.
Looks like no one has any comments right now, so I thought I would, um, bring up something that you said last meeting, Annette, that I thought was really interesting. Um, and just see if anyone had thought about this, had any comments after you'd posed this question. Trying to find it in here. Okay, so it was something like what precepts did we ignore to end up at this sad experience? And so if you wanted to clarify that question at all, you're totally welcome to. And if anyone else would love to respond. I would love to hear your responses. It really stuck out to me that. That idea in the God's Covenant People Talk of precepts and sad experience. And I know you'd voiced last meeting. Maybe there was some relation to that Saturday conference before that God's Covenant People Talk. And so. I'd love to hear any conversation about precepts and how. Maybe we go forward with precepts into future women's conferences and. Hope to learn that way.
Can I just, um, address that, um? I think the comment that was made earlier really. Was neat in that. The idea was expressed, we already have so much guidelines in the scriptures and the revelations we have. And we're just searching to find them and understand them and put them into practice. So. It was kind of interesting that Denver should delineate. In that last talk to us all. That we can either learn. You know, by precept or sad experience. And, uh, it did feel like a sad experience, didn't it? Because we all were kind of trying to hone our. Abilities to increase our capacity to love and serve each other. So. We're in a learning mode, I guess. Again, I'm thinking just of the scripture that we're. Taught that. There should never be any compulsion. That we should. Convince each other with patience and long suffering and gentle persuasion. Those are the precepts I think we're, we're missing. Asking just questions of each other. Looking at each other with interest and saying, oh. You believe that? Um, that's very interesting. Tell me more about that. You know, instead of. The judgment that we normally do to each other and cut off communication. I, I'm not skilled at that myself. I'm trying to increase my capacity. So, anyway, maybe other people have some really good ideas.
Thanks Annette. So, um. I think it was a pretty high percentage vote, yes, another Zoom meeting. I'm pretty sure. I better not be blanking right now and getting it wrong. Um, so I can. Email about that. Ask what dates work for everybody. Okay, thank you. Thanks for bringing that up again. Okay, yeah, so it was a yes, we should have another Zoom meeting. And that's before the June vote. So. Yeah, I can message and on the email thread and on the Slack to see when people would be able to meet for that. And then another, um. Thought, give me one second actually. Keep talking as much as you want. Seems like everyone's getting a little quiet now, but you're welcome to keep chatting. Go for it Kami.
Um, actually, my question is, what was the first poll about? I, all of a sudden I'm blanking on what our first poll of the day was. And now that I know you can pull them back up, I've been looking everywhere to see if there's a way to look at that and see what it was. Oh, right, okay. Hold that for just a second. I'm, I'm keeping notes as best I can. So that as I put things together, because it's hard because you sit there and you're like, wait, did people say this or that? So, yeah. Thank you for doing that. Um, now. I have a question for everybody. How well do you feel like the, the. Messages, uh, how many people in the movement, women, in the movement? Know about the women's conferences, are involved in the, either the. Zoom meetings or the. What was it called? The, uh.
Remnant Sisters thread?
Yes, that or I'm like the app, the, the. Now I'm totally blanking. I pulled it up and I still don't see the name of it anywhere on it. What's that?
Slack?
Yes, that's what it's called, Slack. So my, my. Initial thought was that pretty much everybody who was interested in the. Uh, in these issues and and discussions was involved in one of those. But now that, now that we're talking, I'm like, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe there are still a lot of sisters who would be interested. In these conversations who are not being reached by one of those methods. So, uh, thoughts, anyone?
I have heard some women express that they feel that. What has been revealed by the Lord. Doesn't need it, need to be added upon at all. So they're not interested in engaging in these conversations because. Um. The Lord's already said what he said, right? But I find personally being so isolated where I live. This has been a wonderful opportunity to just get to know you and. To reason together and I wanted to take that opportunity to kind of increase my skills. But I think there are some women who are genuinely. Saying, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, that they're, they're not interested in gauging in the subject because. They feel like the answers have already been given. Does that make sense?
That makes sense to me. I don't know if Kami was going to respond to that, but I've also heard the same thing, so I can definitely add that in as well.
Yeah, I feel like if people don't want to engage, that's perfectly fine. I'm just, I just want to make sure that anybody who does want to be involved. Feels like they are, like there's an opportunity for them to be involved.
I think there's always a pro, a high probability that people aren't hearing about things. Like I know there are people now. That didn't even know about the last November conference until this April. And so I think we don't have a centralized. Communication dispersion system. It's just kind of voluntary, come as you please. So there's no way to really say everyone has heard of this. So. Yeah, I think there's a chance that people don't hear about it and it might be nice to have some time and other. Methods of getting people to hear if they're interested. Carolyn, go for it. You're still muted, by the way, just so you know.
Hey, so from my experience then, um. I have been trying to get on Slack and I haven't been able to. I don't know if that's the case for anybody else. I'm still working on that. Um, but I have also in my circles. There are people that are wanting to talk more about it and to work through these. And so. My, my experience seems to be a little bit different than some of yours. So I think there are other women out there that are wanting to. So I think there are other women out there that are wanting to be involved or would be if they knew what was going on. So just throwing that out there.
Just an FYI, anyone, if you know people who are interested, you're always welcome to invite them. These meetings are open to anyone who's interested in attending. And so you can feel free to share the Zoom link around, just so you know. Oh, Carolyn, I don't know if you have another comment. I'll go to Kami and then if you do, you can go right after.
Okay, so what I wanted to say before we close is that I put up a website and, well, I already had a website. It's been up for a while. That's why some of the links are a little bit weird. But the purpose initially was just to, you know, do a website for the conference. But I've been thinking about it and I know there are some websites out there from different people that have events and kind of the goings on of the movement. But I've been thinking that perhaps having everything specifically pertaining to women's conferences slash councils in one spot might be useful and that perhaps I'll just keep it up as a continuing resource for these kinds of things. I've already got links to previous women's councils and so on and so forth. So I'm just curious, does that seem like a useful thing? Is that helpful to kind of have a place that we just know to go? Or do we already kind of have that covered, do you think?
Something to think about. Looks like we have five minutes left, so just one last call out there. Okay, you have one comment, Kami, in the chat. If anyone, I don't know, is there anything that you guys would like to raise at the end of this meeting that you'd want to throw out there to think about before the next Zoom meeting? Are there specific questions that anyone wants to voice so we can all kind of take note and remember to be pondering those until the next Zoom? Kami, I'll go to you in one second, but I also want to throw this out there in case we run out of time. Emmeline asked, would anyone be opposed to the idea of making these meetings more of an open mic chat? So if you guys would like to have, just like, no, I don't have to call on you, you can just talk freely. I'm so open to that. Just let me know whatever you want to do and we can do that. Yeah, maybe we could poll that the next meeting if you're be interested. Go for it, Kami.
Yeah, it just occurred to me, there was one other question that I meant to ask probably at the beginning of the meeting, but are there other things that we would want to vote on that pertain to the way that the conferences are structured? So I have the four questions, which are all the ones I could think of. But if anybody else has any questions that maybe would be, you know, good to vote on, feel free to either speak them now or I will, I'm looking for my email address. Well, I'm going to throw my email address in the chat. So if you think of one later, you can email me and say, hey, here's something we haven't talked about that maybe we should for, and again, this, this one is specifically about how we conduct the women's conferences, not the councils.
Go for it, Janet.
The main thing for me is that everybody be allowed to participate and everybody be allowed, if there's voting, to vote. People shouldn't be left out. And I think that was one of the things we learned on the first one. Thank you.
Thanks, Janet. All right, it looks like we have just two minutes left. So anyone, feel free to jump in whenever you want to. I don't know if we have any like housekeeping, last minute business to go over, but thank you so much for taking this time out of your life to come and discuss with us. I really appreciate the conversation and like Annette said, the opportunity to get to know you better, to practice reasoning. I am so grateful. So thank you all very much.